We'll call this meeting into order, start it with roll call. I'll just have everybody go down the line.
John Hatcher.
Dave North.
Stacy Zidler.
Okay, alright, at this time will everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Jim wasn't able to make it back in town tonight, so that's the reason why he's not here. Do I have approval, a motion for approval of the minutes from the June tenth meeting?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Stacy and second by Peter, all in favor say aye. All popes, so moved, okay. Parks report.
Alright, little birdie said I keep this short since we got rodeo going on this week. Yeah, so I'll start with Rotary Parks. Had some storm damage up there, I think we may have had a tree struck by lightning, Central Wyoming Trail Alliance. They assisted Parks yet again and got that hazard removed from the trails. There may be some trail repair that we'll be looking at doing. Rotary is gonna have a workday July twenty second, starting at four P M. This is to install the, the new wayfinding signs that we've been working on for a while now. So, most of it's gonna be hauling the signs up to the posts and putting them in the brackets, there's a couple of posts that'll be removed. And there might be one post that needs to be set. So, that's, I think they're looking for volunteers if anybody's interested, but they usually Rotary has a bit of a group. And then one of the running clubs, they reached out to me about assisting in that as well. So, we probably have pretty good turnout of volunteers to get those back up and running. I have a couple of signs here. We have what we're calling a geologic trail. I call it the staircase, it's the one with the cables that goes up on the east side from the falls. Joanne Theobald had brought this to my attention of interest, she put together a group, we've been meeting for almost a year. Going over what the signs should have, where they should be. These will go up to my staff to fabricate some framing. So there'll be a sign on each of the platforms and then a couple as you go up that trail explaining the geology of the area. The county's cost is basically fabricating some frames and setting a few posts. So, we're really appreciative of that. Rotary stepped up and Wyoming Signs stepped up to provide the signs. So, we're, we're very thankful for them on that. I'll pick these up real quick and, and kinda just show the crowd. We have two larger signs that are going on the platform, so I'll kind of explain the geology of the area.
Yeah, hold them on platform so the camera can pick them up, so they can actually see what they're. Thank you.
So, they just gotta give you some additional purpose there, maybe you have a QR code on the one that'll give you some additional information if you're interested. Four of these smaller signs that go up along the trail, just to be able to see it. So, these hopefully will be up in the next couple of weeks. The week might decide to be up July twenty second. So, that's what I have for Rotary Park. I have Hell's Half Acre next, which I, I think the chairman has a bit of an update on that.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I sat down with Visit Casper on that because they're, they're the ones that actually did the grant on all that and they're overseeing that. And it is a pass through. The county did do some work out there, which the county paid for, but they'll, they'll reimburse the county a hundred percent for that, so we won't have to worry about that. They ran into some budgetary issues with the materials that they were using, size. The cost estimate came back, well over a hundred thousand dollars over what they had the grant for in the estimate. So they're, they're reevaluating some of that, they've, they've looked at some different materials to make sure, get it done. And at that point, this point, they're moving forward, but they're just, they're looking at changing a few of the things as far as the materials. Instead of using red cedar, they're gonna use, because that all comes out of Canada. And with the tariffs, it's a lot higher than it used to be, a whole lot higher. And the cost for treated material is about a third of what the, the red cedar would have been. And so, they're going that route. Originally, they were, they were looking at some other options, but the amount of bracing and the concrete and everything else that you would have to use, to use, to do that would have been Asher. So they decided to stay with the, the boardwalk, basically, so it's gonna be a lot similar, a lot more similar to what they have in Yellowstone as far as that type. Sort of thing, so, but they are working forward on, on that. And they're gonna get a, get a bid, an estimate, so they can hopefully get started on that this fall. So, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd add to that, I do have a, a meeting with the committee and Visit Casper on the fifteenth at one o'clock. So, you know, if, if there's a board member that's interested in attending, just let me know, and I'll get you the details. On that, about July fifteenth at one P M. Not a lot going on on Casper Mountain, camping is fairly busy. We've had a couple instances of unauthorized tree cutting. One gentleman I did speak with and, and got that, that stopped. Collecting firewood for camping, you know, dead wood on the ground is, is fine. However, you know, cutting, we had, I think fifteen or sixteen small trees that were hatcheted down by somebody, they were left with a recliner in one of our campsites. We disposed of the recliner, it wasn't worth saving. So, and then we had a, another gentleman that was up there. Just thought he was taking care of some hazard stuff and, but he didn't have permission or trail closed or anything, so we did that. And then another guy was cutting firewood and, and didn't have permission. So, any, any harvesting of, you know, anything other than fallen timber that's used for your campfire and your campground. Needs to have some sort of permission from the county to do that. We do have, Central Wyoming Trail Alliance has an M O U with the county to maintain our single track trails. And they do cut down the occasional hazard tree or trees that have fallen. And they have been doing some new trail work up there, which is authorized, and so there's been some, some minor removal there. I walked, walked those trails last summer when we started this, and it was a very minimal amount of trees that had to, had to be cut down for the new track, new trails. So I just wanna make the public aware of it, you know. Collecting fallen dead wood for your campfires, fine, but any collection for warming your house or sale or anything else needs to be approved by the county. County weed and pests, I received an email the other day from a citizen concerned about some of the thistle along the paved trails at Biathlon. They did copy weed and pest, and I spoke with Matt Gillevet the other day, and they were already up there spraying that. It's not the season to spray thistle, but to prevent that growth from pushing up the asphalt and cracking it more. They took the opportunity to go up there and take care of that, so I appreciate Weed and Pest doing that for us. And then the only other thing I'm working on, on the mountain is we, we improved the campground, campsites at Bear Trap last year while the road was closed. But we have some areas and we have some extra tables that we're gonna set some picnic tables out for, for day use. We have the occasional conflict, somebody wants to go for a picnic, under the rules, they're supposed to reserve the site. Most people don't know that or don't think about it, and then we have a camper that wants to use our site and there's picnic area there. And so, bit of a user conflict there, so we have at least three or four sites around Bear Trap where we can put a little bit of gravel for a parking, single parking car. And we can have a table there and we'll mark those as, as day use picnic areas to kinda increase that opportunity for people. I guess the only other thing is the Casper Mountain Trail Center. We're still on board for August ninth for an open house, grand opening. Plans are real preliminary, I have a few phone calls out, but I haven't talked directly with any of the local merchants and, and user groups I have. I've talked with a few user groups over, over the course, but I need to solidify that with some of them, so we're, we're trying to get there.
Michael, what do you need from us, either in terms of direction or rolling up our sleeves and, and making that a successful event on August ninth?
Some direction, I mean, kind of our, our layout here is a, an open house, you know, August ninth is Saturday, maybe a, a ten to four timeframe. And we'll do, people can put their names in for a drawing for, you know, a couple of nights of free camping. Family set of ski passes, a single ski pass, and then if there's anything provided by local merchants, we can do that too. And, and other halves, a few drawings throughout the day. I'd like to get some food trucks in, if anybody knows how to get ahold of food trucks, that would be a help.
Hey, I can help you out on that, we've got some contacts on that, so that we can do that.
And then I've got a list, I need to get ahold of Snow Gypsies. Austin Arches, I'd like to invite them too, they, they do a lot of work at Archer Range. And just trying to get all the user groups that are on the mountain, the Biathlon Club, the Nordic Club, the Snow Gypsies.
So you're gonna, you're gonna handle that?
Yeah, I'll handle that.
Food truck, opening the door for some food truck contacts?
Yep, and then.
About fundraising?
What's that?
What about fundraising, you, you're gonna maybe reach out to some, some in the community? I, I don't even know what, what your budget would be here if you need fundraising.
Honestly, I'm not sure. Be nice to have, you know, some kinda snack food and some kinda drink and, you know, if there's somebody, you know, a group that'll donate that or, or whatnot. Budget for that, some kinda fundraising for that.
I'll, I'll check on some drinks and stuff like that, I'll.
And decorations, you know, if we need decorations, we don't have any artwork on the wall or anything at this time. So, you know, it's a blank slate, we can pretty well decorate however, you know, if we need decoration.
Walmart sometimes has grants available to, or they'll donate food and stuff to various projects.
But if, if we're gonna ask the food trucks to come up, I mean, it's, it's, there's this balance.
Yeah, so maybe.
Water's fine, but, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I can bring up the athletic jugs with some lemonade and water and iced tea kinda thing, you know, and small cups for that and then just have the, yeah. Yeah, you're right, the food trucks were, were to replace any kinda snack stuff, so.
For decor, do you, are you asking for us to bring up some pictures and hang them on the wall or hang here?
Right now, I think, I don't know, some balloons, some, I, I don't know exactly, I'm not a party, that's my wife's department. So, you know, yeah, I'm not, I don't think we need, you know, that might be something if, yeah, I don't know how to decorate it right now. So, I don't know how to permanently decorate it right now either, so maybe that's something we wait a little bit for.
We have the plaques, the dedication plaques, both the main one and then the one for the chimney fireplace?
I do not have the fireplace one.
What's the status of that?
I have to touch base with the sign company, they have the information.
You think we can make sure, do everything we can to move heaven and earth to get that there before August ninth? I think it's, I think it's imperative.
Yeah. If they can't have the plaque complete, we will at least have a proof of it, you know, showing this is what it's gonna look like, this is the size of it. Cause I know that other one took like four months to get.
When was this one ordered?
I will have to look.
We've got a month.
Yeah.
Let's see what we can do.
She said Murdoch, she said Murdoch, I didn't think they did those, so.
So yeah, I will, if anything else comes up about the open house that I need some help with, I'll email the parks for.
Michael, while we're talking about the lodge, and I, I know that we've got Trail Center parking lot as a budgetary item, we'll talk about that later. But I really think that building needs a sign, I, I think it, it looks like a, just a building.
I don't disagree.
So, so I, I think that we need to get that figured out, and, and I don't know that the artists are on this board or that you're an artist. But at least a name on the building, or a name on the fence, or both, you know, let's be proud of it, because I think it's a, a nice facility. I think we want some curb appeal and some, you know, what people as they're driving on Casper Mountain Road to be able to look in and say, oh, okay, that's a public building. Not a, just another rodent bridge or somebody's barn dominium thing. Can you let us know either offline or at our next meeting, hopefully, hopefully before the open house? And we'll have some ideas to toss around, we're not gonna have the sign up or the lettering up, of course. But if, if I remember the public, I'd be like, well, you know, isn't that part of the showcase for the, the building?
You know, Michael, you also might read out to these interest groups that are gonna be up there and else, they might have some old pictures or something like that, they'd like to donate, that they would put up in there that, since they're using that, that, the building up there. That they might have Snow Gypsies, or different ones up there, that might be a way to decorate the inside of it.
Okay.
You know, for permanent, you know, people coming up there might have some things that they might have from years ago, even from like the thirties or forties when.
Right.
The way it was looked up there.
I, I think John has a great idea, I, I think, I think an email to each of those groups and some of the other people, long time mountain folks. That they might love to provide something temporary, temporary event.
And a, a simple way to do those, is we've had, we've had a wedding, we have a lot of people that wanna use a venue for weddings that have shown interest. And so, you know, do you leave it as more of a clean slate for that? But we have a seventy-five inch monitor that's getting installed in the banquet hall that you could simply do a slideshow of, of these photos as well. You know, especially if we get hundreds of photos versus, you know, five or six around, around the building, that, that's just an idea of doing a slideshow. And that monitor will be installed before the grand opening, we're getting that done now too. Is there anything else on, on the Trail Center? Talked about the reservoirs a little bit. Fourth of July was actually, except for one incident, it was calmer than usual, for the most part, or at least that's the way my staff reported. I did get an email from a citizen about the trash, but the fourth of July, we had the dumpsters emptied beforehand and immediately after. And no matter what you do, we had a roll-off dumpster out at Wolf Point and Pathfinder and a roll-off at Bishop's Point to, to kinda alleviate the trash over there. And no matter what you do, the trash just is overwhelming for the fourth of July, so. But yeah, it went fairly, I mean, we didn't have too many issues, or at least my staff didn't. I did get some comments that, that most of our facilities were kept fairly clean, so we did pretty good with that. Trustee Zidler and trustee Hatcher might have more comments, cause I believe they were probably out there over the fourth. I, I tried to avoid the area I went on the mountain, so.
There was, there was a lot of people out there and it's good that they kept all of our campsites and everything else good at Alcova, because there was a lot, a lot of people out there, so that's good, there was good stewards. And that your staff didn't have too much more problems.
I concur, I think everything, I don't think you're ever gonna get on top of the trash problem out there on the fourth of July, there's just way too many people to consider that are out there, the campsites are full. But I think everything ran smoothly, this was also, you know, close to grand opening for the new marina. And I think there were a ton of people out there and then the lack of problems, and I work at the hospital, so you know, we didn't see a lot of chaos either, so I, I feel like it went really well.
Good. That's all I really have, I mean, my last item is budget discussions, we kinda touched on Hell's Half Acre. We have two separate grants for there, Visit Casper is the, they're running the financial end of it, I'm listed as project manager. We got some gravel laid out and some dirt work done by Rodent Bridge. Rodent Bridge's equipment and man hours was kinda written up as part of the in-kind match for the grant. We did go, go over on the gravel, but we have room in that, that grant to, to adjust it. These signs here, you know, we're talking about doing some signage at Hell's Half Acre as well, we'll probably do something similar to this out there. Try and get some kinda educational component on the signs out there to let people know what's, what it's all about. Chairman, maybe you'll speak on the mountain wayfinding, vehicle wayfinding signs a little bit on budget there?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much taking care of, Visit Casper's also got a grant for all that, and they're, they're working through that right now. And those will be up probably next year, next year, they're not gonna be up there this year, but they, they, my understanding is that they sent that out to the sign company. Get everything printed and, and then everything will be taken care of by that grant to get those taken care of up there on the mountain, so.
Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Especially for the new trustees, but also I think for myself and maybe the members of the public, I think it'd be great to have a, some of the paperwork that gives us an idea of what that finding project is. And maybe what some of the, I guess, photos of the, you know, the signs are gonna be, where they're gonna be located, just.
I'll get, I'll get with Visit Casper, cause this, just since you guys were involved in it, actually, this has been a project that, that was brought up. Started about five years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that. And so, it's, it's, COVID kinda killed everything and it's.
Chairman, I, I can probably answer trustee Nicola, trustee Nicola's questions a little bit on them. So I believe there's twenty-three different signs located along Casper Mountain Road from Hogodon Road all the way to the base of Muddy Mountain. And then out Hogodon Road and Micro Road to the Archer Range, and then out East End Road all the way to Ponderosa Park. These signs, you'll see them around town, they're, they're the newer signs, you see the big blue signs that say downtown or David Street Station, I believe there's some out east. They're that same size sign, they have a different graphic on top to represent the county. So each, each municipality in the M P O, Barnum has its own logo, Mills has its own kinda graphic, the city does, and then the county does as well in Evansville. And so, it follows that same template, it's the same consultant did the mountain wayfinding signs is did the M P O. So, if people have seen those, that, that's similar to what they're gonna look like. But I can't, I will submit the final package with, with maps and, and the signs, but for the city and public here. I just thought that might be a, a quick way to give people a little bit of an understanding of, of what they look like. And they provide direction to public facilities. So, the Girl Scout camp is not included on the signs, the Baptist camp, Mills Spring Ranch, the, the private, or the church camps or the Lions camp. Those are not included on these wayfinding signs, so that was a determination made, I think in late twenty-two, when, when we were finalizing this package. And the subcommittee that, that I was working with made that decision to not include those, which I don't believe the city includes private, private things. I mean, the Nick Lason's on there, but that's somewhat public, so, yeah. Well, I guess she would, yeah, so, you know, so yeah, that's, that's kinda the whole package in a quick synopsis of describing it to you guys. So, I will send that to you guys. The next budget item is Trail Center parking lot. Springtime was rough on that, we have some drainage, it doesn't drain the way it should. I have a plan to possibly be able to rectify that without a lot of expense. But I did request in the budget ten thousand dollars for additional base to put on there, cause I, I feel as, once we get a contour correctly. In the few spots, we kinda need to basically make a shallow valley for everything to flow in, put the base down, get that rolled in, is that compacts into the, the. Well, some of it is virgin soil under the forest, it was done, I, I feel like it'll start to build, we may have to do this for another season or two to kinda firm up that base. But I think we can do that with minimal effort. Austin Burgess C W T A was gracious enough to assist me with his mini excavator. County Rodent Bridge cleared a culvert that's right above our parking lot on the mountain road. And the way that drainage comes into the culvert under the parking lot, it wasn't flowing. So, Austin and I went up there and we were able to excavate it out, take some of the riprap and, and set some water bars every twenty-five feet up through there. And it's working quite well so far, so we have better flow, we don't have it, you know, just sitting there and right next to the road, so. That was something that we had assisted with, but yeah, that's where the trailer, or Trail Center parking lot is, the lights that were damaged. Those have been corrected in the parking lot, we had one that was knocked off, somebody actually ran into the light pole. Crushed the conduit on one side, and so that's been taken care of as well. And then the Archer Range targets, I, I put in a request for thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase targets there. At some point, I'd like, we need to do some maintenance there, and I'm sure that that's what all these folks are here for, but.
And just, just so everybody knows on that, I have reached out toward the Outdoor Rec Board to see if we can get a matching grant and use that thirty-five thousand as a fifty-fifty. So that we can get additional targets and some other stuff. I have, I reached out to Amy Crawford on that and that, we'll have that on the agenda. So, I know that was presented in the past, but now we have some money that we can use for, for that fifty-fifty. And so hopefully they will move forward with that, so I think Austin's on that board, aren't you? As well as myself, so hopefully we can get it moved through this time, so we're gonna try. It, I, I know those need to be replaced. Um, it, I, I know those need to be replaced up there and that's, that's something that uh, if we can do that and get that. That grant money that way, that'd be good, so.
Uh, the last budget item is, is in the lake budget. It's uh to replace some of the sidewalk with the trip hazards. Uh, and remove the trees that are causing the rise in those sidewalks. Uh, I have an estimate on the trees. Um, I will be getting them scheduled, um. Personally, I really hate to do this work while everybody's out there, however, um. It may be best to get them started sooner than later on this, um. And then uh, I'm still working on getting an estimate on what the sidewalk replacement is. Two of the um concrete companies, it's too small a work, too expensive, too far away, so. Um, which I understand they need to make their business decisions on, on if they want to drive forty-five minutes and have concrete hauled out there. Hand mix it or um what they want to do for that, so uh, yeah, that's kind of where we're at with that. Um, any questions on budget discussions?
So we'll, we'll work on. On that, uh, we have somebody else that might be willing to do that concrete work, so I'll get with you on that and. That, get that figured out, so see if they'll do it, so go ahead.
Michael, um, how's your staffing? Are you fully staffed or are you still trying to fill that position?
Uh, staffing where? I'm sorry.
Just staffing, park staffing. Are, are you fully staffed or do you still have some vacancies?
So I have uh, I have two vacancies on the mountain. Uh, the lake is fully staffed. Except for a seasonal caretaker, uh, because I promoted within, uh, one of the seasonal to full-time. Um, so I don't think I'll fill that because we're after the fourth, um. That's, we're surviving without a second caretaker at the lake, so um. But on the mountain, I have uh an operator that um, I had a vacancy come up and so. I have interviewed a gentleman. He's offered um, accepted the position. Uh, he's going through the process with HR right now, um, the start of it, the background check and, and that sort of thing. So I hope to have him on board within two weeks. Um, and then the lodge caretaker position's a full-time position. That one's currently vacant. I have. Three young gentlemen that I'm trying to schedule interviews with, oh, um, they're all interested. Um, they don't have any hesitations about working the weekends year-round, so um. Once I get through those interviews, I'll probably select one of them.
Any other questions from the board? This time we'll move into public comment. Anybody that'd like to have a public comment, please come forward, say your name and your address for record.
Thank you. Uh, my name's John Shore. I uh, during the summertime, my address is at twenty-four hundred Lakeshore Drive. Space number, trailer number twenty-eight. And I'd like to have a discussion with you about the. Method in which we sell our trailers, the contract language for it. This was changed back in two thousand eight and basically, I'll give you a little quick rundown of how it works. Is if I decide I want to sell my trailer, I go down to the uh Parks, Roads and Bridges. My note that says, hey, I want to sell my trailer. Now that's irrevocable. I cannot change my mind. I'm giving a list of five potential buyers. They have a lottery list. It doesn't matter how many people are on it, it could be a hundred, it could be two hundred. I get five. Make a deal with one of these five people. After which point, it's several months later, if I cannot make a deal with them. I have to remove the trailer and all the decks and everything at my expense. This is a horrible, horrible government overreach and it's an asset. There's several of us out there. That this is our summer home. If you were trying to sell your house in town, you know, you, you would not tolerate, you know, going, hey, you only get five people. And if you don't, tear the house down. So what I'd kind of like to see take its place, and this has gone on way too long, is. Down to telecount, telecount, I say, hey, I want to sell my place. They give me the entirely, entire lottery list. If, if you so claim that we need to keep the lottery list to keep the BOR happy. Give me everybody on there. Get rid of the language about removing my place, get rid of the uh irrevocable language. And allow me to try to sell and if I can't sell it that year, well, I guess I'm still gonna be paying the lease and the water and everything else out there. And do it again the next year, just like anybody else. This is, these are valuable assets, so it's, there's a lot of us out there that have. Put years in there and a lot of money upgrading our places. Like I said, there's several of us out here. That's our summer homes. And I guess I'd kind of like to propose, and I don't know if I can get away with this, but I'm gonna try it anyway, that somebody on this board. Make a motion that at your next meeting, that you discuss this. Possibly adopt exactly what I'm, I'm asking you to do. Vote on it and pass it because it's gone on way too long.
It, it's a little more complicated than that. Uh, and, and I'll, and I say that because the Bureau of Rec is involved and.
But they don't want to be your landlord anymore or my landlord, and they've made that pretty clear. They still kind of want to stick a finger or two.
They want to have their finger in the pie and so I'm not saying, I'm not saying that your ideas are bad, so don't misunderstand me. I'm just saying that it takes a little more than just this board making a motion and voting on it to change it. And that, that's all I'm saying.
The contract language is between county and me.
Yeah, no, but a lot of it is dictated by the Bureau of Rec, so and that, that's. That's what was hap- that's what happened. It is up for renewal and that, at this year, this next year, and so. That is one of the things we're gonna be looking at, so.
I've done some research. There's another, no other place in the country that is dictated to, like Alcova is. And it is a result of a former BOR director.
I am not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I am not disagreeing with that at all. I'm just saying that until. Until we actually sit down and go through the contract, that's the way we have to get that accomplished. And it's not just this board voting on it right now, so it, because we do have to work with the BOR on that. And they, and they have gotten a lot more receptive, um, not having that influence in there.
Well, believe in about two, was it two thirteen, twenty thirteen, they said, we don't want to be your landlord anymore, but I, and I understand. They still do have their fingers in there occasionally, but they ought to be slapped.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Pierre.
Uh, thank you for bringing this up. This is a problem. It's unfair. It's the investment that are made into these, these trailers. And then for it to be forced on this process, to be forced on you is anti-American. It's anti-private property rights. It's um, i- i- and, and it's, it's not even um. It, it's, it's not even consistent with this, where these are public lands because they only give you the five names, right? So they don't give you the full list, you know, they don't give everybody on that list an equal opportunity to make a deal with you, so. Um, the, like the chairman said, um, the contract with the BOR comes up uh next year and we're gonna. Try to do everything we can. I'm gonna try and do everything I can as a county commissioner to um, to improve. The situation out there and this is one of the big problems I have with how the lake and the BOR um, uh, what that relationship is. Um, one thing I think we can do though here uh is have a notice um of a. This topic being on our parks board agenda, get adequate ample um input. And at the end of that, if there's enough of a desire from the public and probably a lot of trailer owners. And that, then we can make a resolution that uh, that is specific in nature. And then that goes into the uh Board of County Commissioners file. And then it's, I think is potentially ammunition for the county commissioners in the renegotiation next year, so. I, I think that we can take a written position that we don't like this system. And that we want changes to it, um, and I, I think that's helpful to the county as we're gonna renegotiate.
Appreciate your support there. Thank you. And, and now we'll talk to the uh chairman of the board out there and see if, if they can, what. What can be done on, on the trailer parks to help, side to help you guys. That helps out, I know. Appreciate your time. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, John.
Hey, Michael, I have a question for you. I'm, I know in that contract we have with the BOR. That they do have that lottery system in there for Alcova. Is that in that wording? I can't remember when I read through it. Were they the ones that did the five names or is that something that um, the county did?
So I don't recall, um, if you're the only trailer for sale that year, you get five names. But if, if you're the first trailer for sale, you get the five names. If a second trailer goes up for sale, there's another five names drawn. And the first trailer gets those, so then you can have ten names. So sometimes if you put your trailer up for sale May twentieth. By the time Labor Day comes around, you could have thirty names and they're all unique. It, it is a process. I've tried to modify it. I've had meetings with the Bureau of Rec. Um, I, I've modified it a little bit so there's not redundancy of names. Uh, because names used to get drawn over and over for each trailer lot sale. Um, it's not a great system. My staff would prefer it to be gone. The original intent, that trailer park is not what it is now. Uh, most people know that. Um, the Bureau of Rec is concerned about the windfall and, and um. The hierarchy here is the Bureau of Rec is the landowner. We are, the county is the landlord, is the managing agent, and then we have a tenant, which is a trailer owner. And so it, uh, we're caught in the middle and, and you know, we're trying to get things modified as best we can. Um, the management agreement expires in twenty forty-one. That's between the county and the Bureau of Rec. The lot permit between the county and the trailer permittee um expires May nineteenth of twenty twenty-six. And that's, that's.
Those are five, that's a five-year contract.
Yeah, that's a five-year.
That's the one we'll be working on. That's what we have to get changed.
But the Bureau of Rec has to approve that document before we can.
Yeah.
Go into an agreement between the counties.
If I remember right, our conversation with the Bureau of Rec is that they were the ones that had the five names. They're the ones that said that that's the way they wanted it and so until, until this contract is. Over and done with, then we have to live with it, but we, that doesn't mean we can't work on it when it's coming up and see if we can get changed.
And, and all I'd like to, I guess I'll say this to the public, um, you can quote me on it, but uh. If you look at the trailer lottery system for selling your trailer, there are loopholes in ways to. Make sure you get multiple names or make sure you get the person you want to sell it to, um, just don't put it up for sale first. So.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I do have that document from the BOR and I can go through that and we can do that. Approach that.
Okay.
And see what that wording's in there.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Um, Austin Burgess, Executive Director of Central Wyoming Trails Alliance, Chairman, Trustees. Um, thanks for uh, meeting tonight. Um, I'd like to take this time just to give you kind of a quick update on what Central Wyoming Trails Alliance is doing on Casper Mountain this year, if you've. This is appropriate right now, yeah. Um, so I just wanted to uh, uh, give a quick update. Uh, we have started our trail construction again this year on the phase one of the K, uh, the county commissioner approved Kalan Master Plan. And uh, it's going really, really good this year. Uh, we were able to purchase a Mini X so we don't have any struggles with. Uh, rentals and stuff like that and that Mini X went to good use with the county as well, so uh, we were glad to be able to uh, um, offer a hand of assistance on that. And uh, we have about three quarters of a mile left to go on that main trail before we actually do a complete connector. Um, what this will do is this will actually add um, almost five miles of uh continuous trail up on Casper Mountain. To help disperse some of the use that's up there. We've been seeing a lot of, and I've spoke, I spoke on this with the county commissioners as well as the Parks Advisory Board. And now to you guys, um, as far as the uh. I, I, I don't want to say it's overuse, but the heavy use that the trail system up there, so this will really, really help uh alleviate that uh. Uh, destruction of those areas. Um, we get a lot of straight lining. Uh, where uh basically, you know, the horse travel, the hiking travel, even the bike travel uh takes a path of least resistance and goes straight down, so. Um, and it gets just hammered, gets really, really used, so this, this trail system is gonna be uh very vital to dispersing that. Um, the other things we have going on too is that uh, this is gonna be the year that we're gonna be wanting to get a lot of trail signage up there. So we'll be working with uh, um, Michael Brown on getting the trail names uh together. And he's gonna be actually uh part of our subcommittee with uh Central Wyoming Trails Alliance to get those uh, uh, trail names approved. So we can start getting those uh in the county database in GIS as well as on the popular uh. Mapping apps such as OnX, uh, Mountain Bike Project, uh, Tra- um, All Trails and Trail Forks. So people that come up, since we don't have a potentially an updated map, they'll be, at least be able to see what the official new trails are. Up on Casper Mountain and uh be able to navigate those appropriately. Um, also this year, we have been able to successfully open up one of our uh downhill focus trails. Um, which is a mountain bike only and it is signed, it has the uh, um, the hazard warning signs um posted. Um, in three locations on that trail. Um, we've been getting a lot of really positive feedback on that trail that we finally. And people are saying we finally have something for the advanced riders on Casper Mountain, um, which is really good to hear because that's what we really strove to do. And uh, we kind of um nailed that one, so that's really exciting. Um, and that's really it for uh Casper Mountain. Um, as far as we have going on right now, I'm really trying to get uh, get that trail punched in before um, I leave on vacation here uh in two weeks. Um, really trying hard. We're in probably some of the most rugged terrain that we have seen on Casper Mountain yet, so it's very difficult, very slow. But we're, we're working through it. Um, and then a quick update, just since I've never been able to speak to you guys. Um, we also are going to be doing a collaborative project with uh BOR um. Uh, out at Alcova, the Cottonwood Creek Dinosaur Trail, and that will be starting this fall. At some point, we are fully funded for that. Um, right now, uh, due to generous, generous do- uh, private donations. Um, and working with the uh Wyoming Geological Association as well as the Tate, uh, the Tate Museum at Casper College. Uh, so we do have some very interested partners on partnering with us, on making sure that we do our due diligence on not uh. Damaging that area and making sure that area uh becomes more usable, safer and stuff like that. Um, so if you have any questions on any of the stuff we're doing in the county, um, you know, always reach out. Um, I know uh, some commissioners reach out to me on occasion. Uh, we have some great conversations. We're building a great relationship with uh. Um, Michael Brown as well as the county commissioners and I'd love to build that relationship with the trustees um as well on what we're doing, so. Thank you for your time and if you have any questions, I guess I'll answer anything if you have anything.
I don't have any questions for you, Austin, but I would like to sit down with you sometime in a couple of weeks and go over a few things and.
Sounds good.
Um, just, just for s- some ideas.
Okay, let's do it before the eighteenth. So, because, because I'll be gone.
Well, I might have to do it when you get back.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
That is not something that's gonna happen this year or it's gonna more of a long-term goal, so.
All right, sound, sounds good.
Austin, um, thanks a lot for the work you do for the county and the public in general, um, your, your organization does. Um, it's uh, it's a partnership that I think that is so beneficial to the county. And I think we need to continue to support it in every way we can, so keep up the good work and thanks for starting to do stuff out at Alcova.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Hello, hello. Uh, my name is Neil Rubus. I live at twelve twenty Jamaica Drive. Um, I'm the president of the archery club, Lost Arches here in town and um. Was just kind of wanting to chat a little bit for those that might not know the history about the range up there. Um, roughly about eighteen, twenty years ago, we did a complete rebuild up there, rebuilt targets, trails, put up new signs. Um, and since then, um, we've done um, majority of the upkeep. As far as replacing the bales. And since then, we've done majority of the upkeep as far as replacing the bales as they come every year we go up. Clean lanes, all that. And if I need to get a MOU with you guys about cutting trees and stuff, we can, we can, we just clean out what's falling in the lanes and stuff and try and mow down everything, get everything usable. And I was part of it, thinking about, thinking about it, I was part of that, the original signage thing about seven years ago. We had origin, or we had talked about doing the, the new signs up there and what we needed then, you know, that brought up that we need to do, do some work up there to make it safe and stuff. There's some areas up there where the, the road coming in drains across a practice range. Drains down into the range and has uprooted a bunch of, you know, tree roots, all that kind of stuff. It made a couple of pretty nasty, where, where the walking trails is, I mean, it's big drops and stuff. We've gone up. Some of the members of staff have gone up over the last couple of years, tried to, you know, divert water off of it and stuff like that. But it's, it's getting where it's becoming kind of a hazard and I'd hate to see anything, anybody get hurt. I mean, we do have accidents up there every, every year and stuff that I know, that I hear about and stuff, but we want to try to alleviate that. And that's one reason that we are asking for some help is there's some, a couple of the trails that, a couple of them come like down off a rock faces that we need to get under control. They're getting to be, some of that granite is getting loose and stuff and it's getting where people are sliding stuff. And it just, it just need to fix up. Place has been getting worn out. And another thing that, I don't know if you guys know, this is one of the nicest ranges within four or five states. We host Northwest Sectionals. We did about, I guess it's been about seven years ago, which archers from Washington, Idaho, Montana, Oregon, Wyoming, all came here. We had, I don't know how many people we had here. It was a bunch. But archers from all over the whole Northwest section of the U.S. come down and stuff and we host big field shoots and stuff up there. Here, the last few years, we haven't been able to pass compliance with it. Just due to the condition of the course and what we have available. A lot of things that, that's kind of a hindrance to keeping it up is we have people that show up out there with, start shooting into the, our target bill, blowing the whole back of them out. It's happened on a couple of them and that's why some of those big bales have failed. That and just the amount of use. You go up there in the summer, whenever everybody's, this time of year, whenever everybody's starting to get ready for the hunting seasons and stuff like that. And there's 50 people up there at night, a lot. So I mean, it does, it does get hammered quite a bit and up, up until the last couple of years, we've been, you know, trying to do as much as we can with, you know, replacing those big bales, you know, placing targets as much as we can. But it's at the point where we really just need some help. I mean, it's, you know, we're, we've been trying to help, you know, doing everything as, as much as we can, but you know, it is a county park, so we can only do so much. And we just like to, you know, I've talked with Mike and stuff before and I know Jim has too, but you know, that little bit of help or not a little bit, but it's a lot of help that we need and it's, you know, been, you know, 18, 20 years, I think, since we've got any money back or any help from the county and stuff. And besides granting the restrooms, all of the trash that I mean, the county's done that, done a great job with it. Anytime we have an event, call them up. Hey, we got this going on. We're having a 3D shoot up here. Okay, everything's clean. And I'd like to really commend the guys on doing that. That's been great.
Let me ask you a question. Because I am familiar with that area. Do you guys ever had any problems with the road going in there? I mean, as far as the overall width goes, because I know when you, when you, when you're going through the trees, get to it, it's a lot narrower than it should be.
Yeah, definitely, especially.
So as far as two-way traffic goes, or even if you have big vehicles, it could be.
Especially when we have events up there and we'll, and we'll use like one side of the range or we'll do 3D shoots and something like that, you know, we'll have, you know, 100 to, yeah, 150, 200 people up there and stuff. And we run out of parking, run out of, you know, park, people park on the main road coming in and that kind of creates an issue with the, the practice range going that way too.
And that's, that's kind of where I was going with that is that because it does, it does tighten things up a lot. It makes access a whole lot harder. Because if some knucklehead doesn't get far enough off the road, it really makes it hard to get by.
And then whenever, you know, with the campground stuff up there, you know, we get people coming in with trailers and stuff and they can't back up to get out. And then if there's, you know, a vehicle or two going out, you know, it does create some issues and stuff right there through the, pretty much any of those, the two sets of trees. Other than that, people can kind of pull off.
Yeah, that's, those are pretty, you know, those are pretty much the pinch point where you.
And even whenever we're hauling, because we have a, a big, you know, it's about a 28-foot trailer that we haul our targets and stuff up with. And even then, it's tough to go around some of those little corners and stuff with it. So.
Are, are you guys willing to continue to do some of this work in the future, like doing some of that, the maintenance and clearing the lanes at the beginning of the season?
Definitely, we.
I think, I think you should have an MOU with the county, the Parks Department. And I think that you should have permission to do the things that you and your group want to do and that you can do, they can afford to do, have the manpower to do, whatever. But you should also ask the county what you would like it to commit to do. And, and I think you could negotiate with the Parks Department and the county ultimately. So that whether it's clearing some trees to make, make access better, I mean, I, I think there's a case here that not only is it, you know, beneficial to Neutrona County citizens, but if you're doing this Northwest Regional Tournament, you know, that's an economic driver for the county. And, and so it's the best in four to five states or, you know, in the surrounding area. Let's, let's make an investment in it. So I, I think that you guys ought to say, look, we'll do these things if you guys do these and we might not be able to do them all. But like on the $35,000, Michael wanted 70 and the county commissioners felt this year with our budgetary thing overall that 35 was where we could be. But I think there can be some back and forth and then you've got a commitment from the county.
Yeah, and we would definitely be willing to continue what we've been doing, you know, you know, cleaning lanes, all that kind of stuff. I mean, whenever we go to set up targets and stuff, a group of us goes in there, sets up targets. Somebody's taking a chainsaw and we're just cleaning the shooting lanes and stuff. And, and that's, that's all really the, as far as, you know, we're not trimming trees out by the parking lot or anything like that. We're just.
The biggest thing with the MOU, what it does is it covers you and it covers the county. That's really what it kind of, I mean, that's what it comes down to. It puts that scope of work in there that you're allowed to do. And then that way nobody's hanging out to dry if something happens. And so it, it's just, it's just illegal. It, it's not a difficult thing, but we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to work with you, with our legal department to get something put together. And the commissioners, we can have you come before the commissioners at one of our meetings and just talk about it. And then we can work on that and do that and get an MOU set.
The other thing it does is it's, it creates some likelihood of continuation. It's not just this Parks Director, this board and you in 2025 and 2026, if you're lucky. It kind of sets a precedent. Now, everybody can always back out of an MOU, but it helps give the people who follow us an idea of this is what they were doing, do want to keep doing it or not. So that, not only does it say who's responsible for what and who has permission to do what, it also lays the groundwork for the future, which is I think what your organization wants.
Yeah, we'd, we'd really like to turn this into something special.
The other thing that, that really does too is that when you have that and you have that agreement in writing, it makes it a lot easier to get grants. If you don't have that in, in writing, then it's not in place, that, that's the kind of stuff that grants request. It's like, do you have this? Do you have this long-term agreement? And if you don't have it, they just say, sorry, we aren't going to give you money to something that's, that's not going to last for more than six months or a year. You know, if we've got something in place that we can, that we can work on, it helps everybody. So I do think that is something that we need to move forward on and get something going. And we have a lot of them. I mean, right now we have a lot of them in place and they're not difficult. So.
Do you guys have any other questions for me or? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. Until we get an MOU, when they do have an event up there, if they notify parks and if they notify parks more than 90 days ahead, we can block out those four campsites so they have additional parking. And then they don't have to worry about campers and trailers coming in, but it would alleviate some of that and allow for more parking space for some additional vehicles if we don't have those. And we, we can simply just block out those sites for their event as long as we know and provide them that space. And, and that would definitely be something we'd put in an MOU too. But yeah, the, the more we know about the events going on, the more we can assist on, on things like that because we haven't been made aware. Did I remember recently about any events going on up there? So. That communication's key and that's another thing an MOU is great for.
Michael, will you work with them and come up with a list of what each party would like? And, and then you can get with this board and then we can kind of like, yeah, that makes some sense. And then we can get county legal to kind of finalize it and then present it to the BOCC.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? I'm, I'm requesting, I've already talked to Amy Crawford, I've requested an additional 35,000. You know, we have 35,000 in the budget right now and we're going to, I'm going to bring that forward to see if the Outdoor Rec Board will approve that. But one of the things we need is a detailed, I, and I know that's already come before the Outdoor Rec Board wants. The more detailed we have, the easier it is to get us to push it through. And so that's something that if we can get that information, the sooner the better. That will help out a lot. You can reach out to me, you can reach out to Michael and you can get it to him. He's on the board also. And, and I'll be happy to. Yeah, the backstops are the thing that need to be fixed. Those need to be upgraded. Yeah. You bet. Thanks, Steve. Any other public comment?
I live at 5600 Pathfinder and I just want to encourage you guys to keep moving on that archery range. The community gets a lot of bang for the buck really, when we're talking 50 people a day using it. And when we get the range fixed up, you know, the last big overhaul, we said it was 18 to 20 years ago. If we get her fixed up, it'll be good for another 20 years. And, and for the amount of people using it, the amount of families that go up there and use it, it's just, just an amazing facility. And for bringing in the matches, I can remember back in the eighties, we used to have national matches here. And it, it's, it's just a terrific facility and there's a kind of three portions. There's like two field ranges. It's kind of like shooting golf. And you shoot and you walk and you shoot and you walk. And then there's a, a main section there that just has marked yardages that probably most people use. And that thing has been used so much that probably a third of the targets are just totally decimated. And so, you know, for a community asset, it, it, it really doesn't take that much money and, and it'll serve us years and years and years into the future. And it's, it's just a great thing for the community.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Excuse me. I've spoken all day.
You need to say your name, please.
Bruce Lambersen, 2449 Hokaton Road. Thanks for your time. Stacy, John, welcome aboard. I appreciate that you've stood up to volunteer for the Board of Trustees. I moved to Casper in 1973 and immediately moved up on Casper Mountain and opened a bike and ski shop, Mountain Sports. Still doing that. So 52, 53 years later, I've been, been involved with parks and Neutrona County parks at the lake, on the mountain, more so on the mountain, just because I live up there and because of my business. But anyway, I'm kind of the old guy who's seen it all. And I have some history with a, a lot of the projects that are coming to the forefront that especially for Stacy and John, and I mean, I know you're, you've lived here, but a lot of these things have kind of been promoted and then disappeared and then reappeared depending on, I mean, it's basically been a lot of deferred man, management in the Parks Department. The structure's been changing often. It's been decades since we had a Board of Trustees. The commissioners have done the best they can with all the other things they have to do. We've had a high turnover of Parks Department. Rico?
What's that? What do you call Parks Director?
Parks Director, okay. We, we went through a bunch of Parks Directors from 2005 till now. Mike's been pretty steady, which is good to see. But anyway, so my background, I, I lose. I, I lose interest sometimes and I get back in involved. I think, um, what's going on now is really encouraging. And it's nice to see some authority, some responsibility with the real Board of Trustees who can get these parks, uh, you know, moving along. Um, a few things that came up tonight that I'm gonna mention. There's a lot of fundings gone on for years that has disappeared and projects have been started. Now, one that came up tonight was the wayfinding signs. And that was a consultant called RDG. And they were, um, pretty good about designing signs and things. Our, my, my concern personally was the words on the signs. And, uh, it got, it was part of a million dollar city project that was going to put wayfinding all over the city of Casper. And Liz Becker and a few of the people in the city started this and then they scaled it way back. Um, Barnum adopted some of it. The city did some finally. At the time Brooke Kaufman was, um, su- head of, uh, Visit Casper and also then a county commissioner. She was also liaison to the, um, Advisory Parks Board. And, uh, she wanted to see this wayfinding sign project move along up on the mountain. So Visit Casper provided the funding. This was in 2022. And immediately the thing, RDG had some ideas, but they're not from around here. And, uh, the, the initial signage was, you know, church camps and, and Girl Scouts, which are not public facilities. They don't want the public coming to those places. Those are invited guests and they can take care of how to get there. But the public facilities were in a transformation, the parks, uh, the, the picnic shelters, just that bike trails that were building. There's a lot going on. Their initial, um, format for those signs in 2022 was a disaster such that Brooke asked Michael, who was pretty new, just getting started in, um, to get a subcommittee together and design what should be done on Casper Mountain. And there were about 10 of us, I think. We sat in the, the little meeting room downstairs over there and went round and round on how to make an effective package of signs that really addressed the needs of visitors in the public. For instance, RDG said, put Hogdon on the sign. So well, how about put ski area on a sign? Oh, everybody knows what Hogdon is. And no, we're doing this for visitors. If we all know what Hogdon is, it doesn't matter what the sign says. We went through this for several meetings, finally got a good sign packed together that probably 10 or 12 community, community members all agreed on. We had great suggestions from everybody. And then I believe that turned into a bid package with RDG. And then it disappeared. Apparently you didn't get any bids, as I understand it.
No.
Okay. You got something. All right. Well, it, it got balled up like a lot of things have in the last 10 years of, you know, all these changes. Anyway, my point is the money's there. Whoever suggested we should look at those signs, was that Austin?
Maybe.
Yeah. We should see that big bid package and be sure, because there were some points of contention on different things. I've got right here the final workup. And, and the last meeting the, the, the subcommittee had through four or five years ago, I don't know when it was. Um, we had the layout for everything and RDG was gonna prepare the bid package. Now, I've never seen a bid package, but, um, we went round and round and designed all these things as a community for what would be effective up there. Now, the one thing that's missing here is the Nordic and bike trails, which the bike trails, mostly because of Austin right here, have really, really improved. So there might be, I mean, it's been a number of years since this work was done and now we're getting ready to spend money. We might want a few people to look at it again. But the money's out there. So anyway, that's.
And that, that is, that's money that Visit Casper has, not this board. I was just bringing it forward.
No, I understand that.
So that is something.
But my point is, a lot of work's been done on this. The money's been allocated. It disappeared for three or four years.
And they're following that, which, what was come up with.
People on, at Visit Casper who were involved with it are no longer there. We've had two or three turnovers since. So I'm just saying, let's be sure we're spending the money on what it should be and how it should be. And there's a group of people who sat on that subcommittee that could at least review this. Kiosks, same thing. There, there's a land and water conservation grant. Am I correct in that? Okay. That's granted money to design kiosks. Okay. That's in this packet too. And I'm sorry, I'm burning some time, but this is real money. That was somewhere in the neighborhood of 80,000 bucks. Okay. The kiosks were designed, again, my concern and a lot of concerns of people up there were what are the words on the kiosk? I know it looks pretty and all, but what are we saying? And there was some design work done with RDG. Honestly, if I had that money, I'd be talking to Austin Burgess and CWTA to get those kiosks saying what they should and where they should be, because he's been all over the country in this environment. So my question is, if there's 80,000 bucks, does that expire this year? Is that gonna go away?
It expires in June of next year. So it has to be done. They're following what the designs were that were presented that you guys agree on.
Who is following what the designs were?
Visit Casper is the one that's following the designs that were presented that were agreed upon.
Well, let me point out one of my concerns. Okay. 80 grand. Visit Casper, no continuity from back in the, you know, what, what's going on here?
The paperwork is there. They do have all that stuff in place.
See it. I don't, I mean, I know, but I'm looking at it. I have it right here. Now, let me tell you something. Here's, here's my concern.
Wait a minute, Bruce. Wait a minute.
Okay.
Michael has seen all that. And he was, he is one consistent individual that has been involved in this all the way from the start to now. So he has seen, he has seen what's going on right there.
Let me, let me point something out to you. And I'm not saying this because I'm a big shot. I'm just a guy who's working all the time for this community and for my business. 52 years. Michael's been on the job five years. And not as the director for a couple of years. And I'm not knocking Michael, but there's this disconnect all along. So the proposal for that $80,000, if I'm saying it right, land and water conservation grant was for how many guests? Four, five? I've got the map. And RDG, and I don't know that anybody has ever seen the content, the verbal content of those kiosks.
Well, right now, right now, all you want to think we're talking about is the wayfinding signs themselves.
No, I'm talking about land conservation is the kiosk.
And all we're talking about right now is the wayfinding.
No, I'm talking about the land and conservation grant money for the kiosk. That's not anything to do with wayfinding.
No, it's not.
Okay. So let me continue, please.
That's what I'm getting at is the only thing that we're talking about tonight were the wayfinding signs. They weren't the kiosk.
So what you mentioned about the paperwork and all that stuff, not, not the kiosk.
I have, no, it is not. It is only the wayfinding signs. It is only the wayfinding signs.
Okay. So let me get to my point, please. At the time that the money was awarded, RDG said, do it. Many would think that the primary location for the kiosk would be at the trail center. Okay? And that was torn down and being built. So this is how confusing everything gets. I'm not blaming it. I'm just saying there's just this disconnect often of all these events have happened. So the city owns the land where the trails are. We all know that. Apparently the grant proposal wasn't really gonna work with, for some reason, Neutronic County Parks wanting kiosks on city land or something. One of those kiosks was moved in the planning stage to the archery range. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I would say making a kiosk of where trails are, where facilities are, at the very end of the road at the archery range, the farthest facility other than Bonross Park, is not a good way to, they're talking 20 grand a pop for these kiosks. So there would be no kiosk at the trail center and there would be a kiosk at the archery range where the archers know how to get there. So my point is, we might, and you as trustees, might want to revisit these projects because that is real money. It's gonna get spent the next year. And believe me, I'm all for the archery range, but they don't need a $20,000 kiosk.
The only money that I'm talking about getting spent by next year is for the wayfinding signs. It is not the kiosk.
When does the land and water conservation kiosk grant?
I can't answer that because the only thing I was talking about that, the only thing I was talking about was a wayfinding.
I get that. So I'm saying.
The kiosks are not part of that.
Time is running out on money and the stuff that's sat on the shelf, for whatever reason, should really be looked at before that money's spent. But we're, I thought it's, it's, time's running out on land and water conservation grant. I don't know who has. Okay. Well, that'd be nice to know when that would be, have to be used. But I'm saying, don't rush into it. Five-year-old project or a 10-year-old project.
The k- the kiosks were not, are not.
Getting, I get it. Okay. All right. But you get my point.
I do. I, I understand completely.
Okay. Is there funding for the water system up there, a new water line? Or is that already been done and spent?
New water line to lodge?
Yes.
Uh, we just, I've decided not to do that. That is not being spent. It's not designed. That was.
Okay, fine. So that. So what happened to the money?
It's still in the one cent.
And we don't need the water line?
Ah, it seems to be operating fine.
Okay.
I was asking.
Um, Bear Trap Shelter. Is there money for Bear Trap Shelter? We've already spent $74,000 four years ago.
I'm working on, I'm looking at, I'm looking at some grant money to get that taken care of, but we have not, we have not secured that.
$74,000 in engineering and design work. That's old now. Um, and so anyway, what, I hope you understand. There's, we talked tonight about picnickers in the camp area. There was a study done by the same people did the trail study that Austin's now working over in 2013 that specifically talked about relocating picnic shelters, about segregating picnickers at Bear Trap from campers. So you wouldn't have this thing. This is 12 years ago. There was an outline for these things. I have it. It was, the, the county paid for it, real money. So again, it's just a stuff that's just gotten lost and, and put away. And there's a lot of value in a lot of this work that's been done. And there could be real problems with spending money without looking at some of the other things.
Bruce, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, but I do need you to wrap it up.
All right. I'm gonna wrap it up. But believe me, I've got lots and lots of this stuff that goes back 20 years and it's been paid for and it's been studied. And then the guy who looked at it was, you know, left his job or whatever. Final thing, I've always been, um, suggesting that the Board of Trustees expands to seven members. There's so much deferred management. There's so much need for a variety of skills and skillsets. And you haven't seen anything yet of what else going on. I mean, the county parks is a big, big project. Bylaws by statute can be changed to seven people. And I think the trustees should really look at that because every one of you is gonna have too much to do. And I'm, I'm just touching on a few things. There's a lot of work to do. And this is our opportunity. I'm excited about it. I don't want to waste money. I don't want to lose money that's been allocated. And I don't want to use obsolete ideas in the current situation because a lot's gone on. So that's my point. I'm around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Trustees comments? Trust, Peter, you got anything tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if Michael wanted, even, I don't need a chapter and verse response. I don't even know if I need a response, but I wondered if Michael wanted to provide just a little bit of additional color on some of the comments that were made earlier. Again, this might not be the time and the place to hash through everything, but we didn't really give Michael a chance to, to respond to some of those last comments.
Well, I may have to leave in about five minutes. And so that's the reason why I was kind of trying to get this wrapped up. So.
I would yield my time to Mr. Brown.
Okay. I'll go real quick. Land Water and Conservation Fund Grant for the kiosk is for four kiosks. Commissioner Kaufman asked me to submit that application in a very short deadline. So we had to stay with county property. Um, that's why we had one at the archery range, two at Bear Trap, one at Biathlon. That was for $230,000. It was a 50-50 match. So the county had to put in 230 and then we got 230 free grant for $460,000 to do the four. Now, the full construction design drawings were not completed by RDG. So we were gonna have to pay for that. That was not approved, I think in '23. Um, I think in the '24, '25 budget, uh, it was decided by the commissioners that, um, we need to cut back 230 grand. So we don't have the matching funds. I didn't put it in the proposed budget this year either. So I'm carrying that grant on, but we're not actually, we don't have the matching funds to do the work. So we wouldn't get reimbursed. It's a reimbursable grant as well. So we'd have to put out 460, get 230 back. Um, so that's where that's at. The vehicular wayfinding signs, um, the bid documents were based off the final determination by the subcommittee. I have those documents if anybody wants to see them. That went out to bid. We went to do an order of award for low bid. County legal was in flux. It never happened, kind of fell apart. So we needed to re, it needs to be rebid. And at that point, we had road construction going on on the mountain. So it's like, let's wait to bid till the road's done so that we don't have signs that are under warranty sitting in storage. So that's kind of where that's at. Did I miss any other points that I needed to?
No, but we'll talk about Bear Trap shelters in the future. Um, and I think that's a.
So I had a $120,000 budget for those. They went out to bid for the each shelter only. It came in at 235. The commission said, no, we're not gonna provide the additional funding. Uh, I've applied for grants for those and have been denied. So we're kind of in flux there too. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stacy, you got anything?
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Only thing I have to add is I think you're all showing up tonight. Um, there's a lot of passion in this room about the different county parks in here. I have a lot of passion about the parks also. It's the reason why, um, I became a trustee. So thank you for all showing up and showing this passion. And, uh, by all means, we offer you back each month to, uh, so we can do this. And especially with Stacy and I being new on this board, um, we're all open here. So thank you very much.
I do want to thank you guys for coming in tonight. There's, even though I'm familiar with the archery range up there, I've, I learned more tonight than I, than I already knew. And I do appreciate that. Um, and there are some things that we definitely need to look at. Um, like I said, I've already reached out and we're gonna try to see if we can get some additional matching funds to get some of this stuff moving forward. And there's some other options that we could look at up there to make that area even nicer than it currently is. So, um, and I'd love to, love to sit down and have that discussion with you. Later on. And with that, I don't have anything else.